Fourteenth, twenty twenty-five of the Coolidge, City of Coolidge City Council order has to be stand in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tom Bagnall.
Present.
Councilmember Adriana Sabetra.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Ian Gillespie.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Shoup.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tatiana Murietta.
Here.
And Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
We have a court mayor.
Thank you. First order of business is call the public. If there's any member of the public that wants to address the council, please step forward and give us your name and your residence address. You have up to three minutes to address us. Seeing nobody move forward, we're going to move out and call the public and move into approval of minutes for the city council budget meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty-five, of the city council regular meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty-five, the city council regular meeting of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, that's all there is. Are there any corrections or additions or comments regarding those minutes? If not, I need a motion to act.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve the minutes as read.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah, motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to move into a public hearing to receive public comments on portions of land located in portions of section twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-two, and thirty-three, township five south, range seven east of the Heeland Saw River Basin, Pinal County, Arizona, known as the Central Arizona College Annexation. This is a public hearing, who has this?
Mayor, Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Murietta, council members. We were approached by Dr. Elliott about potentially annexing CAC into the city limits. For all intents and purposes, most people think it's already in the city because of the addressing. It's, uh, college has been fifty years in the community. A lot of us have gone to the school and actually got our degrees and attended ag college there. I was, Dean Merrill was my ag teacher back in the day. And, uh, so there's a lot of history for all of us in Pinal County. And, uh, one of the things, I know we've, we've approached the college before if they ever needed a connection. We're only like, uh, less than a mile, I believe, from our, our lift station over at, uh, at Signal Peak. And so we, we actually can, uh, can connect to the college pretty easy. They have a pond system, kind of like we do. And so one of the things they're looking in the future is potentially connecting to our sewer. And then if they're in the city, we would provide fire service to the college. And, uh, what we would get, and we've talked about, uh, different things we could look at. Our police department could get access to the firing range out there because we, we need that. We have one, but it's, uh, it would be an additional resource, the burn building out at the college that was designed for the firefighters to practice and everything. Access to that also, they have a track for the police that use it out, you know, to, uh, to qualify for the, uh, because if you recall back in the day, uh, CAC had an actual, uh, testing for police officers. And so we're really looking at, at potentially getting that back. So I know the college is looking at. We have Andrew Clegg here. He's the academic dean of the school. And if you have any questions from Andrew, he's here. But really, this is just to get public comment, anything, uh, from the public regarding the annexation. So this is the public hearing portion of it. Uh, once we do that, we already filed a blank petition. And then once that happens after so many days, then we want to move forward, uh, and get the signatures and then bring that back to you for adoption. And so this is just the public participation portion of it, open it up to the public. But for all intents and purposes, you know, I don't see, uh, anything changing as far as how the college operates. They still partner with all the city. They, they partner with Cavett and, uh, they've got a great relationship together doing that. And, uh, for students to be able to get credits in the schools and then transfer those credits to the college. College is also offering a four-year degree in nursing, and they're looking at offering some others. And Andrew also leads the economic development, the economic development people work for him. And, uh, they're a great partner for all of us regionally, besides just Coolidge. So answer any questions you may have.
I do have one question. Um, I think this is long overdue, but I am curious. And this is probably, um, oh, there's the commander and, and Mr. Fitzgibbons is here. They're going to keep their, their police force, right?
Yes.
So if somebody gets murdered at the college, does CAC handle that investigation or how's that work out? I mean, I can understand, you know, non-capital cases or
Right.
lower felony cases, but I'm just curious.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, the, the C, the, the college's police are fully sworn police officers, so they can handle, handle a majority of, or on the campus, and they'll continue to do so. Any major crimes, if they needed our help, we'll definitely go out there and assist them with that. But for all intensive, they are the primary agency that will take care of the crimes. Now, from what I do understand, uh, the chief grizzle has spoken to their chief Frank Alanis, and he has informed that there are some things that they just don't do to a certain level of expertise and they'd like help on. For, one of those is, uh, sex crimes and which, uh, we would definitely lend a hand and go and take those sex crimes if they needed us to help them with it.
Okay. Well, I imagine they have more of those than they do murders.
I imagine so.
Yeah. And what about fire department? Do our fire department respond out there? Do they have, um, a fire truck or anything out there? Does the regional take care of them now?
Uh, currently, they do not have any fire protection out there. Regional used to have the contract with, uh, CAC, but during contract negotiations, uh, regional decided that they no longer wanted to perform that service. So it's been kind of a, just a gentleman's agreement between all the surrounding chiefs that we would help CAC. Um, that agreement's between, uh, myself and, uh, Casa Grande. Uh, sometimes Eloy Regional is just, just not going to be responding out there anymore, even though they are the closest. Uh, there, there is no fire protection out there right now currently.
Well, that's not good. Okay. And Heela River doesn't get involved in any of that?
Excuse me?
Heela River, they don't?
Uh, Heela River does not, no.
Okay. Just wondering. Thank you, Chief.
Yep. Mayor, if I could add, councilmembers, uh, the, uh, we had the fire station out in that area, and we anticipate some houses are going to be, hopefully Sandia will activate some of those. We have lots to the north. So if those go in and then we, we get our, uh, fire station opened out there, we'll be close by within, like we were before, within less than a mile of the college. So we'll be there and then we can cover the city and, and all the increase in calls. I know that's the thing Chief and I spoke about. So that's a positive thing for the whole area.
When exactly do you anticipate on having that fire?
We have the, uh, we have the impact fees to, to build it. We, Gabe and I have been looking at the budget and, uh, probably two years from now, year and a half from now, we'll, we'll start bringing that to you to, to put in the fire, the fire personnel to run it and support our current staff. So, because we get a lot of increasing calls, like thirty percent. So we're getting a lot of medical calls and all that. So, uh, we need to add some more fire personnel. But we, we've got it in the budget. We, we planned it out in our five-year projections and, and we can do that. So. And also eventually the one down south at IPAS, we'll get that one too. A little further down, but it's also in, in the queue.
I've got another question. How about, you know, the sewer connection? Who's going to pay to run that, to connect? I mean?
Yeah, mostly everybody that connects to our sewer, it would be the college that would, that would pay to connect into the line. It would just, they'd put a pipe in. But it's way cheaper than, than putting a, a package plant. And then you heard what a sewer plant costs, and there's not enough actual flow there. It's, you know, to warrant something that big, because it's usually bathrooms and, and that kind of thing. So, um, you know, as, as they rebuild the Penn Center and, and all that, we may have some more bathrooms, so we may have more flow. And as you, as you've heard, the Penn Center collapsed, so we, they're going through a capital campaign to replace it. So we'll be able to help them with the inspections and all that with Stan Tech, make sure it doesn't happen again.
And their solid waste, I imagine they already contract out with solid waste?
I believe they have a private, yeah. Private service that does that. They're semi-commercial type, you know, they, they, it's like in town, commercial businesses contract out.
Well, we built, when they built that thing, as you know, um, we put a line big enough anticipating that the college would be in here along with that development that never showed up.
Right.
And, um,
It's way oversized.
That was one of the reasons that we had the odor we had, that we didn't have enough flowage to move it along.
Right.
So.
This would help that.
That'll be, them joining up will help, if they did connect with us.
Yes.
Will help our flow.
Yes, absolutely.
So, okay, all right. Anybody else? All right, how about out there? Nothing? All right, then we will, uh, move out of the public hearing and move into business items for consent. Does any member of the council want any of these items pulled off for individual consideration?
Yes, Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull item thirteen.
Okay. Anything else? All right, here we go. Consider approval of entering into an entertainment agreement between the City of Coolidge and Midway West Amusements for the purpose of providing carnival services during the twenty twenty-five Calvin Coolidge Days to be held at Sandcarlors Park in Coolidge, Arizona on October tenth, twenty twenty-five through October twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Item eight, consider approval of entering into a third amendment to employee staffing agreement between the City of Coolidge and Educational Services LLC SI for the purpose of continuing the rehire, no retire rehire program formerly known as SmartWorks Plus from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Item nine, consider approval of entering into the lease agreement and addendum between the City of Coolidge and Quadiant Leasing, a neo-post company, for the upgrade of the city's postage equipment utilizing NASPO Value Point Contract Number CTR zero five eight eight zero nine in the best interest of the city. Item ten, consider approval to unfreeze one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital sales tax fund budget to purchase new servers for the police department network from DCW utilizing a government contract. Item eleven, consider ratification and approval of submitting a twenty twenty-five grant application to the Heela River Indian Community in the amount of seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to purchase a new Chevrolet Silverado for the Coolidge Police Department. Item twelve, consider approval of unfreezing capital to purchase three Taser sevens from Axon International, Inc., in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, waiving the city's bid requirements in the best interest of the city and authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Okay. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, thank you. Item thirteen, consider approval of the creation of a fire marshal position within the Coolidge Fire Department to enhance fire prevention, code enforcement, and fire investigation services and approval of the job description. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Murietta, and Council. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this item.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to touch base because first off, I see, so the state fire marshal does not do local inspections anymore. They've just kind of, when did they, when did they decide to do that? Did it just recently or?
About a month and a half ago, when, uh, a lot of our permits and inspections were, uh, getting kicked back to the businesses or developers that were building in Coolidge. Uh, after that, we started receiving, or my office started receiving, uh, pretty much calls daily about, uh, why the fire marshal is, uh, saying that, uh, this is our problem now. It's not really a problem, but this is our, it's our job to do now. Had no idea, so I made a call to the state fire marshal. Did, they said that they were, uh, no longer going to be providing inspection permitting and, uh, plan reviews for, uh, local jurisdictions, even though we've been relying on the state fire marshal to do this for, uh, ever. And, uh, I asked them, uh, why the sudden turn in, um, their policy. They just said that they didn't have the manpower or the budget to do that. Uh, so it basically just fell, and we're not, we're not the only ones that are in this. All the jurisdictions that were currently using the state fire marshal for these services are now having to bear this, uh, bear this burden back onto the jurisdictions. So now we have to, um, provide plan reviews, permitting, and inspection services for all fire life safety systems for any project coming into Coolidge.
Okay. And are those, there's, are there fees involved with that or?
Most definitely.
That you guys will charge?
Yes.
To try to offset the cost and everything?
Mm-hmm. Yep, we are currently, um, James Myers, Carol in, uh, the permit tech in the office and myself are currently working on a fee structure that's going to be encompassing, uh, plan reviews, plan review fees, inspection fees, and permitting fees for all sake, because the state fire marshal, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of good for us because the state was collecting those fees and now we get to collect those fees.
And, uh, now the big question, how soon can we get the position filled and who's doing the work until we get it filled?
Currently, um, myself and Stan Tech are doing, uh, the lion's share of the work, uh, which has really put a, a strain on the, the amount of, uh, things that I'm responsible for right now. Because it's, this is a, this is a full-time job within itself. So I'm basically every day dealing with some sort of research that I have to do on the, on the codes, the permitting, uh, plan reviews. But we're, we're relying on Stan Tech to do, uh, quite a bit of it, uh, right now, just because of the amount of projects that are going on that were frozen basically midstream by the state fire marshal that they just basically kind of did a U-turn and turned everything back on us. So we had several projects that were, that they were, they had maybe done the plan review, but they had not done the permitting inspection. Well, they said, well, we did the plan review, um, and they just kicked it back to us and said, okay, you guys permit and inspect it now. Not knowing what the plans look like or anything, so we were having to play catch-up on a lot of projects. And I'll, I'll tell you right now, Stan Tech has, has really helped us out a lot and kind of, uh, pulled our irons out of the, out of the fire on, on several projects. And, and to tell you the truth, we're actually getting a faster turnaround, uh, than the state fire marshal, because they were normally working off of a sixty to ninety day turn. Uh, we can do it much faster, but this is a, a full-time position in itself. Uh, so, uh, to answer your question, once we get the position approved, um, and we get approval through the, the city manager to fill this position, we're going to put it out, uh, and try to get somebody as quickly as possible.
And do we have any, you know, current candidates that might apply that are in-house or is this something a little bit more specialized?
No, we've, we've got a, we've got a few internal candidates that, um, now, on any, any job description that you see, which I know there's one that is to the, this item, any job description you see, that's a, a, that's the perfect candidate. Uh, so we try, we try to get as close as we can.
Sure.
But we have a couple internal candidates that, uh, would be, be good fits for this. But there's also a lot of good candidates on the outside as well. But the fire marshal position is a, a fairly specialized position, and it's a, a fairly intensive position. And these, um, the candidates are kind of few and far between. Once they get in it, they usually stay in it.
Right, okay.
So there's even, it's not just going to be us that's looking for fire marshals. Heela River's looking for them. Uh, most of the, the departments up in the valley are looking for fire marshals, so it, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough position to fill.
Okay, thank you. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, move to approve item thirteen of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, that carries. Did we do the rest? Yeah, we did. Business regular items. Item fourteen, notice of intention to increase property tax rates for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. What you have before you is the notice of intent to raise property tax. So basically what this does is just allows us to put, um, notice on to the internet that says that we may raise taxes. It tells you the date of the property tax hearing, which is the second June, and then we adopt the property tax at the first meeting in July. But it has to be, um, posted for sixty days, so which is why we're bringing this to you today. Um, there are three options, like I, I mentioned, um, in our budget discussion. So the option one is basically giving the max allowed. So what that is, you can go up by two percent plus the value of new construction, which would bring in, um, one point nine six eight million, um, which is two hundred and eighty-six thousand more than last year. Um, option two is the max with no truth in taxation. So, um, you have to do a truth in taxation if you go up by the, by over a certain amount, which is when you go by your two percent. Uh, you have to have truth in taxation hearings, you have to post it, you have to do notices of the paper and things like that. So we can go up to, um, one point nine three oh million, um, without any of the truth in taxation. And then option three is to bring in the same amount, which was an option in the past. I don't think like right now with, with, um, everything we have facing us budget-wise that we would do that, because that would actually drop the rate and drop the amount that we would receive. Um, so the two options the staff is recommending is either option number one or option number two. You don't have to decide that tonight. Again, all we're doing today is just saying that, um, we're going to post it on the website saying that there's, that you guys may decide to raise the property tax, um, at that June, or that July meeting. The June twenty-sixth would be a public hearing, so if somebody, you know, wanted to speak on it at that point, they could, but this is just our notice that we have to put on there.
So all you have to do is put it on the internet? You don't have to put it in paper or anything?
Yeah, it's just a notice. There's a, there's a spot on our, our website. We do this with, with fees and things like that. Like, so when our impact fees, when we talk about those, we'll have to do that as well if we decide to raise those or our rate study. So again, this is just formality right at this point, um, you know, but, uh, those are, are options that are going to be presented. Um, and again, staff is probably recommending option one or two. The difference between one and two is one you have to do in truth and taxation, the other one you don't have to do in truth and taxation. And the difference between those two is about thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think, or something. Let me see, I did the math just a little bit ago. Thirty-nine thousand. The truth in taxation? Uh, well, number one, you'd have to do truth in taxation. Number two, you don't have to do truth in taxation. So to do number one, why would you do number one? It's, it's kind of like, the way you look at it is your utility rates. If you raise it by five or ten cents here, it doesn't hurt as much as if you tried to go up all the way. So doing the, the paperwork, um, for the truth in taxation notice, I mean, it, it's part of our jo, it's part of my job. I mean, we do the, we do the notices anyway, they're already done. Um, so it's either just post it and put it out there or not. I mean, it doesn't make a difference, but, um, that rate, when you look at the, what it does to the tax rates, the tax rates go down. So with the truth in taxation, you can go to one point five nine eight eight, which is lowering it. But at the same time, one point five six seven four would be what it is, um, with no truth in taxation. So it's a, it's a little bit lower, but again, it's that forty thousand dollars. But again, when you look at it, it's, it's whatever you guys want to do, but it's just a matter of, you know, if you don't get it now, you're not going to get it later, because you're capped by the two percent. And so property levy rates are inversely associated with property values. So the higher the values, the lower the rate. So that's when I first started and we weren't raising property tax, we were like one point nine five nine six. And if you look now, I mean, the rates are going, you know, one point five. So in terms of levy rate, we've dropped, you know, forty, forty to fifty cents, but yet in terms of amount of money is going up because the valuation.
The last time we raised it was like ten or twelve years ago, wasn't it?
Um, raised the levy amount, um, I think we did it two years ago.
Yep, we did.
Two years ago?
Yep.
I know that we did one about ten years.
We went, we went up, we went up by the max with no TNT last year. And then the prior year, I think we did it with a TNT. So.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, you, here we're talking about the, the liquid waste and not doing any things and look where we're at right now. And, you know, we got fire, we got police, I mean, uh, fire department, police, especially we take on CAC, you got to open up that fire department. You got Lucid now buying the cola and you have P&amp;Z supposed to be going in. You had to do something out there. You have a five hundred thousand dollar deficit right now, liquid waste is probably going to be that or five million dollars. So, I mean, you got to get the money somewhere.
Well, and I, and I think too, like, when, when we say we're raising that rate, even going up by the max allowed on a home that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, three dollars a year, um, so on your next year's property tax. Now, that's if your home is valued at a hundred thousand. Now, what you have to understand, just because you bought your house that's say a hundred thousand dollars, that's not what it's valued at. You take the, the assessed value, you got to divide it by ten and, you know, divide it by a thousand and multiply it by a whole bunch of different numbers. So your, your actually assessed value is way lower than that. So, I mean, most of our, our houses at this point probably don't even hit a hundred thousand. So you're looking at less than three dollars a year, um, really on most, most property taxes.
It's, it's the Pinal County assessed value of it's what you pay property tax on. And just like you said, I mean, you look at what I paid for my house fifteen years ago and what my assessed property tax is, my house was, I thought I'd kill myself right now.
But, yeah, so I mean, it, it's three dollars a year if you're, if your home, you know, your assessed value, um, it'd be three dollars and fourteen cents more a year, um, when you look at it. So it's, it's not as scary as it sounds, but it is an increase and I, I get when taxpayers don't want to pay more money. But, so, I don't know, if you guys, I can answer any other questions you guys may have or is, you know, looking for the direction to go ahead and post it?
I, I, I think that we need to go ahead and move forward. We aren't having the growth that we had before. You know, it's not heavy, but we still have growth. As long as you have growth, you're going to have to, you know, it's going to put some stress on the city services, so we just need to go ahead in order to keep up with it. And at the same time, as that, those properties come on the tax rolls, it'll probably be a wash. And, you know, nobody will really see it. So I am completely for this. And if everybody's done with talking about it, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion to authorize staff to post the notice of intention to increase properties, tax rates on the city website.
Okay, there's motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All this does is put it out there for the June meeting.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, report from the mayor and our council. Starting down here with Councilmember Shoup.
Nothing to report.
Just want to say that I attended the, uh, dedication for the flagpole at the DAV on Saturday. The mayor was there and he spoke and Mr. Lope was there and the DAV was, uh, the folks there were very appreciative and very complimentary to the city staff and the City of Coolidge all together on their support for getting that done. And also, one other thing is this coming Saturday, April nineteenth, four to seven PM at Coolidge Elks Lodge, they're having the Reefs Across America kickoff. It's a, it's a taco dinner, ten dollars per plate. And this is to get, they, to get things moving. I know last thing you think about is Christmas this time of year, but it's starting to, it's when they have to start the fundraising on this to be sure that they, that's full event out there. So look forward, uh, hoping everybody will come out for that. So, thank you.
I, I wanted to share that we, my daughter and I, uh, were a part of the community cleanup, like some other people. We did see things falling off the trucks, um, as they were taking it to the free dump day, and, uh, that got my daughter really crazy. Like, we have to run out in traffic and get beer bottles. And I was like, no, we're not doing that. So it was an adventure, but.
Stand up.
Gilbert?
Mayor, thank you. The, uh,
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. She's got nothing.
The, yeah, I just wanted to, I sent you all, I forwarded you an email, a power, actual link just from Lucid on their acquisition, you know, of the assets for Nicola. I believe it was supposed to be approved by the court today. In those documents, it talks about that they're, as much as possible, they offer employment to no fewer than 300 Nicola employees, and they're asked to begin the onboarding later this month. So, that's a really good thing, and that'll happen. And then, we're waiting to see when they'll bring some people in for permitting and other things so we can talk to them about what they need to, they need to change anything at all. Hopefully, not much, be all right. So, you know, CFOs are issued, everything's good. They actually can proceed, but they probably will have some changes in their building, we would anticipate. So, we'll work with that, and just like we would with anybody else, and help them get going. The only other thing I have is the country thunder's over, so we're waiting to see what the tax revenue is because I know we do pretty high sales at Walmart during that time. If you're in that area, it's hard to get around because there's so much traffic, but it's really good for, for sales in different parts of the city. So, it'll be interesting to see whether how that turns out.
I bet Wendy's did better than it.
Yeah. The lines are still, and it's good because the, even the lines at McDonald's are still pretty good. So, you know, we're still, and the other thing is, we have this Wednesday, the annual Euro State of the City. It's in the Elks this time instead of over at the youth center. So, it'll be at the Elks Lodge. And that's it, Mayor.
Okay. I don't have anything to add. Thank you. I need a motion to get out of here.
So, moved.
Motion and second. All favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you.